The committee will reconvene at 8:30 PM. An additional item that was not on the agenda, I make a motion under Article 8, Section C-6 of Board Rules of Procedure to allow for the discussion of that does not appear on the calendar. Do I have any motions?
I'll be, you make the motion, I'll be your second.
If not, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carry. It will be on the agenda. Calendar issues.
John, now we're going to talk about the item. Or we could just, on the blue case.
Okay, I make a motion under Article 8, Section C-6 of Board Rules of Procedure.
You just did that.
Yeah, we just.
I seconded it and we're going to proceed.
Is there any discussion on the motion, I think, right?
Yeah, any discussion on the motion?
Well, no, we have to, do we have to say what the motion is? No, we just voted for the motion to take an item that was not on the agenda and to discuss it now.
Now we have to read the new item.
Whereas the Board Trustees recognizes that probationary status imposed upon colleges accreditation by the Middle States Commission is tantamount to the effective delivery of the academic programs of full-tainment college potential, and whereas probationary status of college accreditation within the service to the very constituency of student service to which forms essential mission of the institution, and whereas probationary status of college accreditation imposed upon the institution is a stigma that suppresses an accurate public perception of the college, and whereas until the Middle States Commission stands on that, the probationary status rule of college advancement, as it should for the benefit of the students and the public it serves, and whereas the administrative and organizational disruption experienced by the college over recent years convinces underlying structural traits that continue to hinder future effective functioning if not corrected, and whereas the Board Trustees recognize its responsibility to provide policy issued for colleges to help to take measures to limit the cost needs for the Middle States Commission's standards of accreditation and those addressed issues that may deter the college advancement, now therefore be resolved with the Board Direct President of the College as described in the National Community College Board Trustee Rules of Procedure Policy 1200 and the New York State Regulations 8 NYCRR 604.3 to undertake the establishment of a system of shared governance and due consideration of the important role of faculty in the administration and advancement of the college while recognizing the genesis of the college's academic set contained in Article 20 of the Labor Agreement between the College and the National Community College Federation of Teachers, and be further resolved that upon identifying best practices in shared governance, the President shall establish a system of internal governance ensuring faculty participation in governance required by 8 NYCRR 605.1 that shall fully comport with the aforementioned Middle States Standards 4 and 5, and be further resolved that the Board declares that academic set bylaws are legally binding on the Board and the Board possesses the right to promulgate or alternate procedures and mechanisms to ensure appropriate faculty participation governance as required by Board. Board Policy Regulation and be further resolved that the President is directed to present to the Board whereon before September 1, 2017, the aforementioned system of internal governance for the purpose of consultation with faculty on those aspects of institutional functioning as required by state statute, regulation, and board policy, and in accordance with advisory of all of the faculty to the extent described in Section 20 of the Labor Agreement between the College and the Nassau Community College Federation of Teachers. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So goes on to the board agenda.
That's policy finding. So John, can you close out, find it? Other issues?
Okay. Does it stand in committees?
No.
That's on the next item.
So, I'll move, we adjourn the planning committee meeting?
Yes, I second.
Okay, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to resume the board meeting now at 8:35 PM. Trustee Patterson, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Yes, sir. Anthony Canaccio.
Yeah.
John DeGrace.
Yeah.
George Gordon.
Present.
Linda Green.
Present.
Monka Jett.
Present.
Andrew Powers.
Present.
Donna Tewin.
Present.
Kathy West.
Present.
Teresa Russell.
Present.
We have a full vote.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the May 9, 2017 minutes?
Still moves.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any else?
Motion carries.
Any objection?
I abstain.
Okay. Who's the other person? That's the one you hear? Figure it out. Okay, so, okay. Trustee Wester, do you mind carrying against legislature?
Sure. Resolved that the pending college procurement agreement with Russell Ford and Dunleavy in the amount of $132,540 as requested by VP Muscarella of Facilities Management is approved by the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees, funding source capital project.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion?
I voiced my concerns about this during the meeting of compliance and capital management.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
I'm against.
Motion carries eight, one. Trustee Grace, would you be kind enough to read the next? Resolve that the pending college agreement with official direct strategies in the amount of $60,000 as requested by the Assistant to the President for Governmental and Media Relations, Murray White, Marketing, and Communication Department is approved by the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees. Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the item?
I made my comment during the finance meeting about the fact that I would want some evidence that it's worthwhile of the spending these funds and committing to a free of funding.
And I had mentioned that we had.
Right, I'm looking for evidence, concrete evidence, so that just will explain how I'm going to go.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
I'm against.
Motion carries eight, one. Trustee Green, would you be kind enough to read number three?
Donate.
And just read the resolve, that'd be great.
Okay, resolve that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees accepts a donation of 25 Cisco routers from the First National Bank of Iowa and expresses their appreciation for this gift.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Still moves.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries point zero. Trustee Jackson, would you be kind enough to read the number four?
Resolve that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees accepts a donation of faculty from school right here.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Still moves.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. Trustee Tubman, would you read number five, please?
Minimum wage increase. Resolve that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees authorizes the increase in the hourly rate of pay for Nassau Community College student aides and federal work-study employees from $10 to $11 effective December 1, 2017 for on- enrolled campus employment.
Okay, I have, I think it says December 31st.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Trustee Carr, would you be kind enough to read item six?
Item six, Grant Eastman to PSEGB. Resolve that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees hereby approve of Eastman to PSEGB as described in the enclosed act.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Still moves.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries point zero.
It's exciting because what we're going to get from this should enable us to do a lot of things we have been hoping to do all right, and so thank you everybody.
Trustee Green, would you be kind enough to read?
Resolve that the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees hereby approve the proposal by the Department of Mathematics, Statistics, Information Technology for certificate program titled Cisco Certified Entry Networking Technician, CCPT, and recommends the approval of this program by the University of the US.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries point zero. Trustee Wester, would you be kind enough to read?
My pleasure. Resolve that the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College adopts the draft of the 2018 to 2021 Nassau Community College Strategic Plan developed by the Institutional Planning Committee, pending review by the NCC Campus Community in September 2017.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries point zero, by the way, to that committee, what a fabulous.
Kudos, kudos.
Kudos, work of art that was done, not even a document, it was a work of art. Okay, at this time, I'm going to introduce an additional item that was not on the calendar, so I'm going to make a motion under Article 8, Section C-6 of the Board Rules of Procedure to allow for the consideration of item that does not appear on the calendar.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries point zero. I'm going to ask Mr. Grace to, we already read the motion, it's still resolved. Okay, we have four resolved, all four. Yeah, okay. Now therefore, we resolve, Board Direct President of the College has described in the Nassau Community College Board of Trustees Rules of Procedure Policy 1200 and the New York State Regulations 8 NYCRR 604.3 to undertake the establishment of a system of shared governance with due consideration of the important role of faculty in the administration and advancement of the college while recognizing the genesis of the college's academic set containing 20 of the Labor Agreement between the College and Nassau Community College Federation of Teachers, and be further resolved that upon identifying best practices in shared governance, the President shall establish a system of internal governance ensuring faculty participation in governance required by 8 NYCRR 605.1 that shall fully comport with the aforementioned Middle States Commission Standards 4 and 5, and be further resolved that the Board declares that academic set bylaws are legally binding on the Board and the Board possesses the right to promulgate alternate procedures and mechanisms to ensure appropriate faculty participation in governance as required by law, board policy and regulation, and be further resolved that the President is directed to present to the Board whereon before September 1, 2017, the aforementioned system of internal governance for the purpose of consultation with faculty on those aspects of institutional functioning as required by state statute, regulation, and board policy, and in accordance with advisory of all of the faculty to the extent described in Section 20 of the Labor Agreement between the College and Nassau Community College Federation of Teachers. Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to first of all, comment on the fact that we were given an incredible set of information as background to this, and if I could be indulged, one of the pieces of the resolution talks about Section 605.1 of state regulations, and I think it's really important because it describes the role of the faculty, and it says the faculty shall participate in the formulation of policy relating to student health, scholarship, standards of admission, et cetera, and there's a long list including curriculum, and it also says the faculty shall also present recommendations to the President regarding budget, appointments, reappointments, and other things like that. I think it is really important that this resolution is based on that, on those rules, state rules and regulations, and I'm happy with the wording in it because it talks very importantly about the fact that we're assigning the President the responsibility of working on establishing the system of shared governance with due consideration to the important role of the faculty, but it's up to Dr. Keen to get this done. I guess your summer now is going to be spent doing this since it's due to us in September, but I think, I think we're on the right track of getting things done here.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries point zero. I'll have to look to the report for the President.
Board members, I think we've had a very productive year this year in fulfilling the college's mission, so our work from day to day is to assure that we serve our currently enrolled students in the best way possible, so we deliver instruction, provide support services, not just for the students, but also for the effective management of the campus. We tend to take these challenges of the day, to take up the business of the day and to get things done. One issue that has kept us constantly engaged from day to day is our accreditation by Middle States, and we have had no choice but to be absorbed in doing what we must to comply with the standards set for us, yet all the parts of our compliance are serving the college well. That is, the work that we do in complying with these Middle States standards are really done on behalf of the college, not just to meet the standard of accreditation. I want to thank the many faculty, staff, and administration who have taken up an extremely vigorous workload during the past year to help the college fulfill the standards of accreditation, and believe me, we didn't hear about the workload, but we didn't hear it in a bitter, in a bitter tone, we heard it with people getting down to business, but pointing out that it was a great deal of work. The challenge confronting us a year ago was daunting, but it's been extremely gratifying to see the commitment of the faculty, the academic department chairs, the deans, the administration, the cabinet members, and institutional army of people who have worked hard during this year to bring us to this point, and I'm confident that we are, that we are on the path to largely or completely fulfilling the Middle States standards with the evaluation that we are facing in the fall. Yet, as we are engaged in the immediacy of this work every day, including the accreditation issue, we must fulfill our commitment to being good stewards of the college's future. This involves giving attention to assessing the trends in technology, advances in business and social systems in the greater society. In light of these greater trends, we should be building and modifying academic programs to adapt to these trends and also to better educate our students to strive for the innovation in academic programs that will serve the students and the institution well. So, maybe we've not been able to look to the future and give it as much attention as we, as we should have during this year, but the strategic plan that is in development and which you, the board members, have seen lays out an ambitious agenda for the future. It's ambitious, but our students and our supporters, the county, the state, the public at large, deserve no less from us. We will dedicate more time in looking to the future and positioning the college as a first-rate institution with a national scope. And finally, I want to thank the board for its dedication to the college, which was so clearly on display in, in your debate over the proposed budget for the next year during your last meeting. It was clear that you had the great interest in the college at heart. Your work on the policy development, and your work on the policy development project and the attention to board functioning have advanced our cause considerably in fulfilling the standards of accreditation. I look forward to working with you, the board, and obviously serving as your liaison between the college, between the board, the faculty, and staff of the college.
Thank you, President Keen. We're going to go to the speakers list, which is basically quite short. Mr. Budnik, I remind each speaker that they have three minutes, and they are welcome to leave us with a copy of their, of their speech, of course, so that we can record it accurately in minutes.
I have no copy of the speech.
Okay.
I am addressing several items, one of which is the need to create a historical district around the quadruple area for the most part, a Mitchell Field Historical District. One of the things we have to incorporate in that proposal somehow is something to reflect the centine portion of Mitchell Air Force Base, which was the black area where most of the barrage balloon, anti-aircraft engineering, and other signal and transportation routes. Also, I noted that recently, the proposal to create the Theater of Roosevelt Memorial Presidential Library in West Bay was not approved. I know the college is acceding to some more property that the Navy has granted to the county. I would hope that they consider the possibility of using some of that for such a possibility for, for its inclusion in the Mitchell Field Historical District, or both. You know, Franklin Roosevelt, the son of Theodore Roosevelt, he received his initial flight education here in Mitchell Field. One of the other things I wanted to mention, very tangentially, I have noticed that as of this point, student tuition, et cetera, is now approximately 50% of your budget. I find that concerning, and I would ask you folks to look at that as to why the state is down to 23%, and the county is down to 27%, okay? It appears to me that, in effect, increases in costs seem to be being borne by the students. I am an alumnus of this school. One of the things I have to compliment President Keen and all you folks on is the outstanding work you're doing trying to maintain the principles of this school, the high quality of this school, okay, because it stands not just for the students and the faculty, but also tens of thousands of alumni. It's very important for all of us too, and I compliment you to the highest degree humanly possible, okay, and I ask you to keep doing that economic job, that social job, that job making a unity of all of Nassau Cali at Nassau Community College. Thank you very much for your time and trouble, and wish you all very, very best.
Thank you, Mr. Budnik. Thank you.
I want to reiterate what was just said, it has to do with tuition and the monies that we're getting from the state and the county. I think we've done an awful lot in the past to try to right the ship as far as the money's coming in, and it just hasn't worked, so I would propose that we put together a task force of individuals to look at the problem and maybe come up with strategies to solve the problem. That's number one. Number two, under the guidance of Kate Murray, a marketing advisory committee we put together, we had a tough meeting, and it was nothing short of amazing. The professionals that sat at that meeting and tossed around ideas, it just was so productive. And one of the kinds of things that the committee is looking to do is to use social media to help promote the college. Part of that has to do with, that's how you get to prospective students, prospective students' parents, and also it's relatively inexpensive, so we're going to pursue that. But I think it's important to start to think about expanding the marketing budget, to maybe support financially some efforts through social media to promote the college. And I'll leave you with this, and I assure you all, in the number of Nassau Community College, $1.3 million in marketing, Nassau Community College, I have two figures, $275,000 and something like $200,000. So, just, I wanted to plant that seed in your heads. And the last piece, the action that it seems like you're going to take in terms of governance and moving to structure new governance, we had a task force, we met, did an awful lot of good work, and I'm sure you're going to consider that good work as we move forward. Thank you.
What is open?
I have.
So I come to the board meetings now with several prepared statements, and so this is the one I have sent to.
A, B, C, and D.
Right, right. It then, you know, kind of thing, so. This has been a year filled with excitement, frustration, disappointment, and hope, yet as complicated as this seems, it is better than the anger and hopelessness of the past. We have made incredible progress in meeting the requirements of Middle States Commission under the leadership of Dr. Keen, his administration, and the campus faculty that have worked tirelessly to recreate the campus and redraft the new beginning for the future of Nassau Community College. This endeavor has created a new atmosphere of cooperation and collegiality with a few notable exceptions. It is unfortunate that those notable exceptions have brought us to this one frustrating issue of standing forth, governance. I do appreciate that board originally gave Dr. Keen the authority to try to resolve this. During the numerous discussions on governance, many valid points, concerns, and opinions were expressed, however, the campus was not able to reach consensus. It is no surprise that we point ourselves at this point. You told us what you expected and what would happen if we did not meet those expectations. However, the NCCFT has the authority over the Senate as expressed in our collective bargaining agreement, and we will not and cannot stand by and allow this abrogation of the Senate bylaws to go unchallenged. We have agreed to expedite our challenge through bargaining arbitration as the most efficient method to resolve this, and hope the outcome is acceptable to Middle States Commission and yet maintains the relevancy and authority of the academic set. Whether or not we agree on any issues, we will continue to work with our colleagues upon common ground throughout the campus and the Senate, with the chairs, with the administration, and with this board. None of us has any other choice. I'm very pleased.
At this time, I'd just like to have a few comments. I've been here, this is going to be starting in a moment, it's my seventh year. I've had the pleasure to work with, I think, with the finest board trustees that I've had since my tenure here. The board is totally dedicated, single-minded of purpose in that our main regard is our number-one mission, which is for the students. We've worked long, hard hours to bring us here, and those of us who remember two, three, four years ago, we're in a much different place. When I say that we are now a community, we really are a united community. We're all in the same rowboat, taking in water, and we're rowing in the same direction, and we've got a couple of people taking the water out of the boat. So, I think that we are in good hands, we have a good skipper who is leading us through, and I want to commend all the leadership of the NCCFT, the AFA, and the faculty for the spirit of cooperation that was manifested today to me when I saw that strategic document. That was the epitome of excellence that lies in this institution, and that is our number-one hope. Our number-one hope is that we have the best faculty.
session at approximately 7:30 PM. I request a motion to adjourn the meeting, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Just mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries meeting adjourned at non-ten.